I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we do the roll call, please?
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cassidy?
Yes.
Councilmember Dan Han?
Present.
Councilmember Cox? Let the record reflect that Councilmember Cox is absent. Councilmember Stubble?
Present.
Councilmember Josh Han?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Wonderful, thank you. Good to see everyone tonight. Let's continue on with approval of the agenda. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Larson, seconded by Councilmember Stubble. I don't think there's any need for amendments or anything. Can we get a call for the questions, starting with Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
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 And motion passes. Next up, communication from the floor. Please approach the microphone and state your full name for the record. This meeting and comments are electronically recorded. All comments will be limited to three minutes. Anyone interested in public comment? I think we had a request from someone remote, is that?
Yes, I see that they are there.
Great. Ms. Leininger, if you can adjust your volume, you are welcome to give your public comment. If you were speaking, we are not hearing you. I don't, I don't think we need to do anything on our end. Yeah, we, we are still not able to hear you. Ray Jean is gonna see what's happening, if there's something on our side, or if it's something on your side. Not able to comment.
Yeah. Monica, if you can hear me, this is Ray Jean. If you logged in with the webinar off of the, the website, you cannot comment. If you get off and re-log in with the email invitation link, you should be able to comment freely.
Okay, Ray Jean's typing a note to you. Okay, and so barring that. Okay. Sorry about the technical difficulties. All right, with that, we'll move on to the mayor and council update, starting with Councilmember Josh Han.
I have nothing this evening, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Stubble?
Thank you, Mayor White. I have just two sort of comments of public interest. I have not attended any liaison meetings since my, since our last meeting and report, but I did want to call attention to a couple of events this week. On Saturday, it's Wyoming Public Lands Day and National Public Lands Day, which is a great time. I know many of us are out on our public lands all the time, any season, and enjoying that freedom we have of access, but this weekend is when we commemorate that and go and celebrate. So there's quite a few events. You can find an array of them, including local ones, to put some hands to work for our lands, if you go to keepatpublicyo.com. I think that there's some trail work at JBR, there's something up at Sinks Canyon State Park. I don't have all the specifics, but I wanted to call that out. Governor Gordon did issue a proclamation this year celebrating Public Lands Day, as he does in most years. And then, secondly, Mayor, I wanted to name, we're gonna start to see a big influx of visitors to town this week, and I know I missed a weekend just recently, but we also had that, but yet again. So lots of people to welcome to town, as people gather to celebrate the Knolls 60th anniversary. I think the events start Wednesday, tomorrow, and go through the weekend, and there's a, I told registration, it's packed. They've had a really strong level of interest, both from hundreds of folks in town and hundreds of folks from out of town. But I spoke with people today at Knolls, and they wanted to bring attention to the Trail Mixer, which happens at City Park on Friday afternoon, and includes live music by our beloved Low Water String Band. And Saturday night, at the Community Center, Community Center starting at 8:00 PM, there's a band Chad McStokes and the Pintos, which includes lead singers, somebody who knows better than I do from the Dispatch, and so it should be pretty great. So Saturday night, free concert at the Community Center at 8:00 PM, and Friday afternoon, the Trail Mixer and Low Water String Band at City Park. There's also a Film Fest Saturday, 10 to 3, at the Grand Theater, that you don't need to register for, and many of you already might have registered. But I think we'll see our hotels filled, and you'll recall that we helped support this with an economic development grant. So excited to see that many people coming to town and spending money. So, congrats to Knolls on 60 years. They've been certainly a really important part of our community for decades, and we're pleased to help them celebrate now. Thanks, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Dan Han?
All I have is, if you haven't seen the colors on the mountain, this is a good year. It is absolutely beautiful, beautiful up there. It's really changed in the last few days. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Cassidy?
Mayor, council staff, just two things. I was able to go on Thursday with Dan to the planning commission. There's some really good work being done there. There's, they're wrestling with some hard ideas and trying to find the best possible way forward. I commend them for their hard work. We had a very fruitful discussion after the fact, and tried to give them the best feedback that we could for them to move forward, and I look forward to their efforts that they bring to us, for us to then, to then work through. And the second thing, and this, we might have to go back to Julie, you, you brought that library Thursday item. Can you, you know it better than I do, can you kind of show that? Thanks, so for me.
Yeah, the civility.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Councilman Cassidy. I knew I had three things, and I didn't write this one down. In the newspaper, there was an ad, so many of you have seen it, for a community forum titled, "Where Do We Go From Here?", and it's, so this is Thursday night, Lander Library, 6 to 8:00 PM. "Where Do We Go From Here?", a discussion on where Wyoming citizens can find common ground and move in a positive direction in divisive times, and includes our local representative Lloyd Larson and Representative Ivan Posey, and several other column folks as well. So it looks like a good discussion, 6 to 8:00 PM at the library. Thanks, Councilman.
All right. And Councilmember Larson?
Yes, thank you. Just one quick item, is that as I attended the Propoja Conservation District meeting here last week, that they had just completed a Wind River Outdoor Education Camp for a lot of middle schoolers, like 90 of them. They had a whole herd of them up there, two nights, three days, and it sounded like they, they just had a ball. There was a lot of educational opportunities there, and the more I'm around that conservation district, you know, they, they just do a lot of stuff here in town that I was not aware of. You know, you guys are probably smarter than I am, and recognize that, but they, they do a lot of stuff in, around the area, you know, not, not just in Ag, but a lot of different venues there, and I just, I really appreciate what they do. That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you. For myself, just a few things. So, last week, I had the honor and wonderful opportunity to join the One Shot for their three evenings, and really remarkable, another group that does a tremendous amount of volunteerism for the Lander community, but also fundraising. They're honing in on, to date, close to $3 million being raised for habitat and conservation, which is pretty amazing. The Western Sportsman team won for the, the effort. It's actually a team of three ladies, so, and they were done in under six hours, so, under six hours. Yep, yep. So pretty neat. Yeah, and again, very impressed with, with all that happens there. Thank you for noting the, the Knolls event coming up. Yeah, we are gonna see a lot of folks, 750 RSVPs, is impressive. Ray Jean and I went to the Region Four WAM meeting last, last week. It was a good meeting to get to see folks from around our, our region, and one of the things of note that they are trying to do is rebuild the partnership with the National League of Cities, which is nationwide and provides a lot of resources. So, for this year, their annual conference is gonna be in Salt Lake, and WAM will cover one registration per community to be able to attend. You still have to do your own hotel and transportation, so anticipate doing that. And then also what they're looking at is, again, with a neat partnership with the National League of Cities, rather than each municipality having to come up with a dues to join, which is a little, I mean, it's not for our size community, it's doable, but gets pretty hard for smaller ones, is to actually do basically a buy-in bulk. So WAM would do it and cover membership for all of the communities, which is pretty neat for that. Really appreciate all the things that WAM is thinking of doing. And lastly, Lance is not here due to family obligation, but I want to give a shout out to the streets, or the water crew for taking care of a water break, not only really quickly, but in some really miserable conditions. And, you know, those folks just dive right in without a word of complaint. We have, we have some truly remarkable staff, and I've communicated that to Lance directly, but I also want to put it out to all of us as well. I think we all appreciate that. So with that, move to staff reports, and our chief law, what do you have?
Thank you, Mayor. First, probably Monday, if you're not aware, Wyoming Pathways has a whiteout grant, and they're hosting an open house, a safety open house, in Lincoln Street Bakery. Myself's gonna be there, and, and I think Hunter, about pedestrian, cyclists, and driver's safety. It's from 9:00 to 11:30, if you're not aware of it. And then, October 1st, at least the time that I've been here, we're hosting our first Coffee with a Cop at the Loaf and Jug at 9 o'clock in the morning. After that was advertised, we were reached out to by a number of the entities in town that want the same thing, so I foresee a lot more of those. Loaf and Jug was picked because they reached out to us and asked us to host it there, so that is also at 9 o'clock in the morning, if you feel so inclined to stop by. Outside of that, I've had nothing else.
Thank you. One thing I would note about the importance of pedestrian bicycle safety, swing by the junior high or the middle school when it's in session, and look how many bikes are out there. That, that to me is the prime reason of why we need to be mindful and make sure that kids on bikes can get to school and home safely. Yeah. Any comments, questions for, oh, okay. Ray Jean?
Thank you. Actually, there's another safety event happening next Friday, after the Wyoming Pathways one, and Elcan is sponsoring a Walk Again at Peak for the littles, and so they're gonna go out and have some events and show the kids how to walk and walk across the street, and get around all the new construction. So, that is a school event, but if you have a parent in that grade, make sure that you can attend that. In response to something that Councilman Cassidy asked, the, the planning commission is asking to be in a work session with the council for two proposed changes that they're gonna come up with next, and we're hoping that that can be on the October, the fourth week in October. We're hoping that could be a work session dedicated to the planning commission. Another thing that Councilmember Larson said, Propoja Conservation District, they are doing a lot of things, including they will be in the room with us for our PL 566 grant Thursday, when NRCS comes in, and we give them a field tour and explain our grant application for additional water storage from Worthing, Frye, and upstream of us. That's all.
Any questions?
I do, Mayor, if I may. Thanks, Assistant Mayor. Can you tell us, what's the preview for the planning commission topics? What are the issues?
The two things that they've prioritized right now are working on definitions, mostly stemming around short-term rentals, and then the second thing is the appeals process, which we have some cleanup to do. We propose that in the large packet, so we don't have a lot of work to do, but we'd like to pull those out and make sure that we're in line with state statutes to keep us from some liability.
Great, thank you. All right. Moving on. I don't have anything tonight unless you have questions. Any questions for the treasurer? Okay.
One, sorry, I just need to visit with you after, just a personal thing that I've got, okay? Don't let me forget.
We're, we're intrigued.
How much money do you want? I don't have anything either, unless anyone has questions for me.
Nothing for me unless there's questions. Okay. Seeing none, let's move on to new business. So, first up is approval of the Propoja River Park subdivision. We can get a motion in a second, and then Ray Jean can walk us through it.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Larson, seconded by Councilmember Cassidy, and Ray Jean, fill us in on this, please.
Thank you. This was on a public hearing and on the docket on September 18th. For the planning commission, they have recommended approval of the Propoja River Park addition, and what this does is it takes the portion of the Propoja River Park that has already exists inside city limits, and it rezones it from R3 to public lands. It also includes the lands that would be purchased by the adjacent landowner, and it notes that in his mobile home park, he will retain R3 zoning, and that's where mobile home parks are allowed to be. This jumpstarts some future activities that we have to do in the Propoja River Park. Eventually, we are going to have to annex the county portion of that park, and that will probably entail annexing adjacent properties. At this time, though, tonight, you're voting on just the Propoja River Park addition. That includes the adjacent proposed land purchases and rezones our city portion of Propoja Park from R3 to public lands.
Great, thank you. Any questions about this? Okay, seeing none?
Mayor, sorry, not, not very swift there on the, the button. Assistant Mayor, when do you think, what's the timeline for the annexation to come to us next, and how does that look for landowner notice?
So this is, this would be my first time that, as, as my other duties as assigned, I have to do an annexation. In reading the statutes, it could take six to 18 months. There's a lot of things that have to be done, including water and sewer studies, tax studies, law enforcement, any of the city services that are not currently put in on, on those properties. So, we're looking at, even if we start it right away, we're looking at a year or more before it would happen.
So along those lines, I know you've mentioned a conversation with me, that you've started this conversation with landowners, but it goes back quite some time, and obviously now is a little more, can you give us?
Yeah, thank you.
Look over here.
In the fall of 2022, so we purchased the Propoja River Park in 2021 with grant funds from the Land Water Conservation District, and at that point in time, we did restrict that entire property, both county and city, to be public lands for recreation. That was a requirement of that grant. In 2022, I sent letters to those adjacent landowners, letting them know our intentions to make that a park, and at that time, we discussed future annexations.
Great, thank you for that. Any other comments, questions? Okay, call for the question with Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
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 And the motion passes. Okay, returning to old business. First up, item A, approve third and final reading of ordinance 2025-09, rezoning original town of Lander, Block 29, lots five through 10, from R5 multifamily residential district to C commercial district. Can I get a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Hi, on that one. Say moved by Councilmember Larson, seconded by Councilmember Josh Han. Comments or discussion about this? Councilmember Stubble?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad we've had much time to think about this, and to try to, you know, solicit new ideas. I know when we did the first reading, there was a lot of, let's pass it forward for debate, and I was a sole no vote, which is always a little like, ooh, but I, you know, it does give us more time to think about it. So I will say, though, that my mind has not been changed by the amount of time we've had to consider this. I'm still really troubled that we don't have a clear proposal from the proponent for this property, and I'm deeply unsettled by the idea that I need to weigh a change that, and framing of what can happen on this property from one set of allowances, which includes a lot of business use. R5 does allow business use and commercial use, to another set that opens up a whole other set of uses, and, and we're not being told how it will be used. And so I can't weigh the community interest of the end result if I don't know what it's gonna be. And I see this as part of the heart of Lander. It's a district that I think can be a really nice, it is existing, like mixed residential and mixed commercial, and that's allowed now. I would entertain, I, I don't see our project proponent here today, so I'll communicate this directly as well. I would entertain, if this doesn't proceed tonight, seeing a proposal where it's not all six lots. It's in fact, the Mason's Lodge itself, which makes sense as a commercial building, and maybe some adjacent piece of it for parking to make that a viable business, you know, a viable area for business to thrive in that building. Clearly, the on-street parking might not be, you know, good enough there. And so it's, it's the size of this proposal, and it's the, the vague, what's gonna happen next, that I, hasn't changed my mind, and I'm opposed to this rezoning, Mayor. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
In response to that, and like you said, the proponent is not here, but Councilman Han asked that same question at the last council meeting. I would like to read an excerpt from the planning commission meeting minutes of August 7th. Dan, who's the owner, stated that they would like to restore the building and have already started. They would like to keep the lots intact with the building, but only the future will determine the final uses. And that's pretty much what he told Councilman Han last, that he'd like to keep all the lots intact. So, for your information.
I thought he'd done a great job of answering that last leader, last meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Dan Han?
Since the owners are not here tonight, I would like to see us table this, instead of voting on it, because if, if, if we, if we vote this down, then it has to start back round one, right?
I believe that's correct, yeah.
So, I would entertain tabling this until, until they can be here, and then possibly make a decision there, and, and not waste all the time that they have involved.
Okay. I want to look to Adam here for tabling. We need to have it tabled until a specific date.
You can make a motion to table it, but it would have to be tabled to a specific meeting date. So if you just make a motion to table, then it will be heard at the next voting session, technically. Or you can make a motion to table it until the council meeting in October, November, December, whichever you would prefer, but it does have to have a specific date attached. If one is not attached, it will be set for untabling at the next voting.
The soonest date, the soonest date, and I'm pretty sure they'd be here.
Okay. So what is that, October 14th? So do you want to formalize that motion?
I would like to make a mo, I'd like to make a motion that we, we table this until our next meeting, and and the owners are here.
Okay, we have a motion to table this decision until the October 14th business meeting. Can we get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Cassidy. So now we have to vote on the table. Is that correct, Adam? I want to make sure I follow Robert and his many rules of order.
Unless there's other discussion, then yes, you, you, you'll need to take a vote on whether it's going to be tabled or not.
Is there a discussion on tabling, Councilmember Stubble?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I wanted to make sure I, I'm understanding where you want to go with that, Councilman Han. So, do you, do you want to have a discussion where we possibly see if the owner would be interested in amending this proposal, and the number of lots from commercial, or how many lots would go to commercial, so that if that's amenable, that might change votes here, rather than restarting, where they have to put in a new application and come forward with a different application?
I would rather them be here. I mean, we have, we have options.
Mayor.
Assistant Cassidy?
Mayor, I also tried to discuss it with the owner here last week, you know, and I too also just don't feel quite certain what the future looks like for that. There's, there's been some questions about whether those are gonna turn into warehouses or not, whether that building's gonna be, continue to be worked on, and we've, we've talked about it for two sessions now, and I also feel some reservations on it. So I think that I agree that maybe table it until they're here, and perhaps being able to get a clear picture of what the future looks like, so that we can better balance the loss of that R5.
Okay. Councilmember Larson?
Yeah, Mayor, I think we're dragging our feet on this thing. He's, he's explained what his ideas and purposes are. They're, they're not crystal clear, but they're, they're certainly not nefarious, and I, I think that we're doing him a disservice by not carrying through with this.
Okay, thank you for your comments for everyone. Any other comments before we vote on tabling? Okay, so seeing none, this, the vote would be in the affirmative to table, and starting with Councilmember Larson.
No.
Yes.
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 Okay, the motion passes to table that until October 14th. Moving on, the next piece of old business, approve the third and final reading of ordinance 2025-10, rezoning Earl and Farlow addition, block 110, lots five and six, from R5 multifamily residential district to C commercial district. So once more, if we could get a motion in a second, please.
Move to approve. Second.
Moved by Councilmember Dan Han, seconded by Councilmember Josh Han. Discussion on this one? Councilmember Stubble?
Waiting for somebody else to jump in, and I'll go. I am, and I'm aware that this is disappointing, but I am also opposed, based on what I believe the community interest is, to this rezoning as well. I feel strongly about having the heart of Lander, the main street and the couple blocks on the sides of Main Street, be a really thriving district that has revenue generation out of commercial businesses, and has residential, and especially high-density residential, because this is some of our few areas, R5, where folks can walk to their place of business, walk to the services they seek, walk, in this case, to school in two blocks. And so I see this as a very, as a place that probably has a strong likelihood of interest for residential. I know, Mr. Paprika, you've, you've tried a proposal and found it wasn't viable, but I, I want to see more evidence of other types of proposals that are not affordable, before I make up my mind that that's not, R5 is not appropriate for this zone. You've heard me say in the last couple of months, several times, that I want to preserve the R5 we have. It's a very limited resource for us. We don't see a lot of community appetite to adding density in other areas, and so that makes me even more feel strongly about maintaining what we do have. R5 does allow a wide variety of commercial use, and Mr. Paprika, in August, I believe it was, the first time we, we debated this, you painted a really compelling picture about having dentists and lawyers and service industries off of Main Street, and I look at R5 and think a lot of that is allowed, because I also want to see that. I, you know, I think that we have that in other areas of the street, but in this case, as opposed to our, our last item, we do have a really specific proposal, so thank you for coming with a very clear picture of what you want to do, but I did look at that proposal for warehouses here, and, and I don't see that way outweighing the community, the community benefit of losing R5 possibilities. You know, it, it's not a warehouse for storage is important for your business. I, I get that, and I, I hope that there's other places in town, if this doesn't pass, where you do find that. Those, those are the kind of uses I see for the industrial park, for the edges of town, not for prime space, for the type of, of a community where you can move easily between the services and the plate, and your homes for our residents. So, looking at community benefit for me here, that doesn't get, losing R5 and the possibility for R5 here, there's a benefit to that, and it's not for me outweighed by having the storage warehouses that you proposed. So, so thank you for bringing this proposal to us, and I, I know you're probably feeling disappointed in, in my position here, but. my position here, but I do also oppose this rezoning, Mayor.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Cassidy.
I just have one comment, and I want to say thank you for the discussions that we had about it. And, you know, on September 11th, you know where I live, right across from your childhood, I believe, we walked over to the fire hall, you know. And when you walk to the fire hall from my house, you walk right past one of my neighbors, Joe, who lives behind the old Safeway. And it really kind of clicked in my mind that his circumstances are very similar to the two lots there, you know, right behind the grocery store, or what used to be the grocery store. And the ability to move back and forth, like near the school, and they're just so close to Main, really had to weigh that against what that view might be, you know. There are people who live currently with those similar views on the backside of, or on the other side of Garfield, I guess you could say. So that was one of the kind of sticking points that you and I discussed, and it really was compelling. But when I looked at it from that other perspective, I think I too agree that, you know, we probably would benefit better and more from having housing there, if that is something that can be economically viable. There's some blocks of this side of Main, if you can, if you continue down a couple of blocks, it's just metal building, metal building, metal building, metal building, and those will never go away. There'll always be warehouses, you know. So I too believe that maintaining R5 is my vote.
Thank you. Other comments? Seeing none, we'll call for the questions, starting with Councilmember Josh Hahn.
No.
No.
We're voting on this right here.
Correct.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
So we have a three to two. So that ends up not passing for this one. Mr. Paprika, thank you for being here. Much appreciated for that. And it does not preclude you, excuse me, from resubmitting an application for the future. But right now, it did not pass on the third reading. So with that, we will call for adjournment of the special meeting. Could I get a motion in a second?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Josh Hahn, seconded by Councilmember Cassidy. Call for the question, Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
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 Okay, we are adjourned from the special, and we'll move on to our work session. And this will be starting with the handout that our clerk has made available to us with a whole lot of pretty colors on it. All right, so first up, discussion concerning parts. We're just going to do parts today. Other proposed Lander Municipal Code Title II code changes, demerits, fines, and definitions. So we get motion in a second to discuss. It's a workday, we don't really need to. But so we'll turn it over to you to lead us through this, please.
The definitions, many of them come from the state statutes, but I would draw council's attention to restaurant, because the definition of restaurant doesn't exactly mirror a straight stat, state statute. There was some indication from the council that they would like it to be a little bit more like it used to be, that it be a room, there'd be a little bit more included as to what that would be. So I think the differences in that proposed language versus the state statute is a room rather than a space. And then this definition includes individually priced meals, which is the same as what state statute says, served primarily on the premises. Again, that's the same. But this is different than state statute, where the primary source of revenue from operation is from the sale of food and not from the sale of alcoholic or malt beverages. That's the same. Somewhere, I thought that there was a proposal that it be that there not be other industries there. Is that, maybe that was discussed but not added? So that's what that looks like. The other thing that I would like the council to take a look at is the demerit section and the fine section, to give input on what they tell is appropriate there. You will notice that there's some green language that wasn't in the packet, in an effort to try and make more clear the due process rights that someone may have, if they are in this situation, whether it's a fine, a written warning, or a hearing, the type of due process rights that they would be afforded. There are some changes that didn't quite make it in here yet, that council could consider as well, and that would be on number seven, governing body decision, which is the second to last page. A needs to be removed. The theory behind this, and in conversations with our city attorney, the state statutes allow, specifically allow for this council to potentially suspend or revoke someone's license if they have failed to pay sales tax. Other than that, there's a whole section on what happens to suspend or revoke a license holder's license. That really has to happen at the district court level. So if this council wanted to have a hearing and say, hey, you know, these are the things we hear are going on, this council could do that. But their recommendation at the end of the day would be either nothing happens, or authorizing city attorney Phillips to file something in the district court to go further. Those are really the only two things that are safely authorized by Wyoming state statute as it sits there today.
And if I may add to that, when I went through this, and part of the reason why you're getting these late edits is because I read it a little late and was getting some edits. But the biggest key with this is that the city council doesn't have the authority to revoke or suspend a license, unless, and the only reason is, if they haven't paid their taxes. Otherwise, we have to afford them due process rights under Wyoming statutes. Now, Wyoming statutes are silent as it pertains to fines, if you want to fine them, but there could be some claims made that the city would be acting arbitrarily and capriciously if we did not give them due process rights for fining. And so that's why, out of an abundance of caution, I've asked that, and I sent a process, I don't know if the clerk got the process to you guys, but a proposed process for being able to propose that a fine, if the demerit system were in place, that a fine could be levied against that individual, and they could cure that by paying that fine, or if they don't agree with that fine, they can appeal it, and then we have the due process rights in place for that appeal. But the appellate procedure in these situations are the same, is that you guys are the administrative board, meaning that the initial appeal will come to you, or a hearing examiner, whichever you would prefer, to be able to determine if that license should be revoked or suspended. And if this board or a hearing examiner determines that it should be revoked or suspended, then that recommendation would then say, okay, we're going to have to go to the district court to be able to enforce that. And that the district court is the only agency or authority that can actually do that.
So a question on that. On what grounds would the district court make that decision? Is it based back to what city council determined? Would they be looking at our demerit system?
They would look at everything. So how it would work is, it's an administrative proceeding, which is laid out in statute, and there's procedures for it. And so we would have to produce a record of everything that has occurred, which would be the application, the appeal, everything that has done. That would be submitted to the judge, the judge would review that, and then he would set it for briefing and ask for briefs to be drafted, and then render a decision based on that.
Thank you. Yeah. Councilmember Dan Hahn.
So if I'm getting this right, this language gives us some teeth?
It gives you the ability to assess a demerit system to liquor license holders, so that we aren't going to be faced with a situation where we're just saying, we want to revoke your license and good luck. And so what we're doing is codifying a procedure to be able to allow the city to be able to work better with liquor license holders by using a demerit system, so that with every infraction, we're not going to be dealing with revocation proceedings before the council, because that's essentially what our ordinance says right now. With this system, it would allow the police to say, hey, you're serving underage children, and we can assess a demerit system. And if they reach a certain level, then we can talk about whether they're going to be fined or revoked, but that still gives them due process rights during all of those proceedings, because they have a right to do that, they're a license holder.
Yeah, I totally agree. I think this, I think this language is black and white, and I think that, I think it'll help everyone out in the future, both sides. It's in writing. Yeah, I like it. Thank you. Thank you for the word.
That we have better clarity on our side, better clarity of the process if there are issues.
Yes.
All of that. Yeah. Other comments or questions? Councilmember Cassidy.
Yes, Mayor. So on Section D 1C, right to contest, if the licensee disputes the violation or fine, they may request a hearing before the governing body or hearing examiner within the same 15-day period. So if they are found in violation of one of these, they can then step forward to, they're going to hear from the clerk, right? And then they have 15 days to come here. Is that how that's going to work?
Correct.
Okay. And we adjudicate that?
I'm sorry?
We adjudicate that?
Well, it would start off by either a hearing examiner or the city council. They get to choose.
Who gets to choose?
The claimant.
The claimant, okay.
And who would be the hearing examiner?
There is a service down in Cheyenne that we could employ.
Got it.
I have one other question. This is for Chief Wall, if I can. So on the 2.3.1, the demerit point values from most severe to least, I just kind of sketched them out to the right, from worst to least, it's controlled substance, minors, cooperation with law enforcement, intoxication, after-hours gambling, sale and violation, records, reporting, and tips. The severity aside, frequency, what would you see, from your experience in the past, would be the most common violation? Would it be the tips or something else?
I can't give you a gauge on tips yet, because with this new ordinance, it's going to be the first time we, as this city, step forward and require that. So we don't have any experience with that. I would venture to guess that that's probably going to be somewhat problematic in the beginning, right? But as I spoke before, I'm getting two of my guys tipped certified, so we can provide the training for free. So we're giving them avenues to get that done. If I had to tell you right now, what I think is probably going to be our biggest issue is selling to people that are intoxicated. Overservice by far would be my guess, based on experience of what we have right now.
So that if we were to say, if we were to characterize what you said, is that some most likely violation, right? Would you say that that's the most, that that violation perhaps has the most severe risk as well, or no?
I think it's case-by-case dependent, Councilman. I don't believe that it has the highest risk. Unfortunately, based on our geographical location, that is one of our problems that we deal with daily. Not only in bars, restaurants, liquor stores, we deal with it at Maverick, we deal with it at Loaf and Jug, like that's just, that's a thing that happens here, unfortunately. But these were kind of broke down based on severity, on the long-term outcome, if we don't do something about them, right? And I, as much as I'd like to tell you, I feel like we can solve public intoxication or overconsumption, I just don't believe that we can. This is our chance to do our best to control that.
Right. So I'm trying to think about the two axes of like a risk assessment, right? Likelihood and severity, and understanding what's most common, and therefore potentially most likely, and then trying to hit the right point on that matrix to where it's going to have the most severe consequences for our community, and then drive those demerits up into that kind of red zone, to where you have a high number of demerits associated with high risk and common violations, you know? That's where my mind is going.
Sure, I understand that. I think probably if I could, the easiest way I can explain it to you, one of the hardest things is going to be, overservice is not just like this needle point, right? Like overservice to you versus overservice to me could be completely different things on a level of consumption and what my body's used to, what I can't have, what I can't have. They all kind of work hand in hand. We move towards the overconsumption in the sense, more often than not, when they call, and are reason for us to remove somebody from the bar, right? We all know that you make the worst decisions when you're at that level. The decision to leave is always the hardest, unfortunately. But I think, I mean, devil's advocate, just where you're at, if we raise that so high to the overconsumption, you guys are going to be seeing a lot of bar owners in front of you very rapidly, is my stance.
Right. And I agree with you that that might be the outcome, but that's the outcome we want, right?
Well, and I believe, I'll be honest with you, once you guys have agreed on these definitions in the demerit, I had said before, and I stand by it today, this is going to be advertised that we're going to put on at least one or multiple, if that's what it takes for me to talk to every liquor license holder within the community, to explain to them what this is, why we're doing what we're doing, what it comes down to. I think the biggest for me is the fine side of it goes to the bar owner. It's pretty simple for us to go in and write a ticket to the bartender or the server, and the owner of the establishment to either get rid of them or do something. And there's never retribution to the owner. That's why these are important. I really feel like, with proper education and proper enforcement, as the dust settles on this, I don't know that we're going to see a lot of people, because as Councilman Hunt said, this is very black and white. This is the requirements, this is what you have to do, and if you don't, here's the outcome.
So my kind of last comments on it are, one is a question, Mayor, the tips train, is that per interaction with the location of the bar, or is that per employee?
So the tips training will be required by every employee that works there. So anytime that, if we have one of their servers that's not tips trained, they're fined and they have the demerit. If they have four of their servers not tips trained, then they have that times four.
Perfect.
Okay.
Councilmember Cassidy, although it's not part of the sections brought forth tonight for comment, another section talks about a requirement of license holders to train their new employees within 30 days. And we feel perhaps if the police department can provide that training for free in an expedient matter, that that's doable. I've had some feedback from a license holder that went through tips training with a great program in Fremont County, but she was very frustrated with the amount of time it took her to get her certificate. And she's expressed that to me, which is another reason I think it would be great if our police department can provide the same information, because maybe that can happen more quickly for people.
We're working hand in hand with Tana. You guys know Tana, the prevention manager specialist. She's already tip certified. She's helping me get two of my guys done. She's offered any classes that we need her, she would be more than happy to help with. And this is a service that we provided in Sheridan, with the Sheridan PD. I had two tips trainers there. We'll see a lot in the beginning, I'm sure, and quite a few. And as time goes on, we'll taper off, which I'm okay with that. I will be very clear that we won't restrict class sizes in a maximum or minimum, right? If they hire one new person and they need to have them tips trained, then that's what I'll do. I mean, we're going to do everything, we as the police department and the city, to make them successful.
And if we can change serving behavior and consumption, I think we're winning, right? And that's what I really, you know, I'm not, I don't think anybody in the room is aimed at, you know, hurting businesses. It's we're trying to change that behavior. And so my last observations or comments would be, if sales to minors and sales to intoxicated persons could have kind of the same weight, and then if the one that has specifically about violations, so if you are not supposed to be serving at all because of a previous violation, but you're serving, I think that's unauthorized alcohol service. So that's somebody who's been suspended, but then they're serving So that's somebody who's been suspended, but then they're serving while suspended. If those three things could be, you know, raised kind of to the top of the bar.
Well, and I think, Councilman, that's what tonight's about for you guys to look at it. And if you guys decide, hey, no, this is more important. I think we need to move this, this. This was just a, I was given a list and what, what do you feel is most severe, right? Without, so that's what this is about tonight. So I'm all for whatever you guys want. I just, if we focus and go back on what we dealt with previously with no black and white. We're just trying to make it black and white and, and whatever you guys think is best is, is why we're here.
That's, that's what I asked for me. Thank you.
So that being said, Cassidy or Councilmember Cassidy, I apologize. This is a work session. I, I would appreciate some guidance from council when you say you'd like them all to be the same. That's great. Do you feel that that should be on the upper end or the lower end or?
I'm sorry, yeah.
The 510 maybe for all three of those?
I'm sorry, I wasn't clear.
No, I'm just.
I would say that. You know, the 150 controlled substance violation stays where it's at at the top. Right. And then you've got the minor and cooperation with law enforcement at 10s. And then I would raise those others to 10s.
Very good.
Right. So I would, I would say that. C O D intoxicated, or I'd recommend or suggest a sale to intoxicated persons would be as, as severe as to a minor. And then also if you're, if you're selling when you're not supposed to be selling, you've already been caught and you're doing it after hours out the back door. Then that, that is raised as well to 10. Apologies there.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes, I'm just curious, is the tips training required just for bars or is that also for retail?
Anybody that's serving any type of alcohol, sir. And be quite honest with you, it's in Wyoming state statute. They just don't, as we've learned through this process, they don't help us. But tips, anybody that is handling and or serving any type of alcoholic beverage will be required to be tip trained.
Okay, so my, my concern was that, you know, I, I can. Have somebody come in and request. A bottle of booze from me. And what I know and understand, you know, on a retail tail side, you know, they go and grab a bottle and, and. You know, maybe I know the difference, maybe I don't, I don't know. You know, but I was just wondering, is there a. Does this tips training make that more black and white to where, to where the person that is selling the, the liquor? Can, you know, is there certain things, I mean, we can't give him the, the. Test where he counts the alphabet backward or anything?
Oh, no, it's so, the tips training.
Couldn't do that now.
Where you were going, I was gonna offer to tips trained you specifically, but. So everybody has an understanding of the tips training. It's a, it's a four hour course that's about best practices. Things to observe about over intoxication, quantity of alcohol they've served this person, how much they've drank in certain amount of time. It's, it's a long-term training on multiple facets of best practices of when you can serve, when you can't, when you shouldn't be serving. I think the feedback that I've received the most out of it is a lot of the trainer, a lot of the people that go through the training at the end. They're very educated on, they are able to say, no, I'm not serving you. So many people don't believe they can do that and they don't want to be in trouble with the owner for doing that. So there's, as you've done in the past, I would invite you to sit through one so you can see what it's all about. So that it's a basis on best practices on serving.
Okay, so it doesn't matter whether you're serving from the, the retail liquor establishment there, Mr. D's or, or the bar year.
Correct.
Everybody needs to be trained.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Miss, Miss Mayor. If I may, I have another proposed adjustment. If you go under subsection C, demerit thresholds and consequences, I think it's just the next page over. Some of the penalties under the 15 to 19 point penalty would be a potential three day suspension of liquor license. 20 to 24 points would be potential seven days. I would suggest that you might want to change those days. Primarily because I don't know if we want to go through the pain of. All that procedure for three days of suspension because it's a lot of work. I, I would propose that you probably increase that to a seven day suspension for the 15 to 19 point threshold. And the 20, 20, 20 to 24 being either 14 or 21 days. But that's, that's your guys' call.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. I was going to make that suggestion as well. Not only for the effort of a hearing, et cetera, but also if, if we want consequences, which is I think what we want. Then seven days means it's going to span automatically a Friday, Saturday. And a three day could be a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, which is less, less of an impact on a, on an owner. And then likewise, as we get into a, a longer time, you're potentially looking at, you know, three weekend events being, being impacted by that. So. Seems like a, a smart thing to do. Other comments, questions?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I have a, I have a few germane to some of the points you already raised. I, let's see, so where we are just on that last conversation, I agree the seven to 20 from three and seven. Especially given the length of time that that process will take anyway. Do we want to mimic the 25 plus points? So again, this is subsection C, demerit thresholds and consequences. 25 plus points talks about the violation hearing recommendation of revocation through district court. Do we want to mirror that, that it's through district court for the other hearings as well? So that's maybe just a semantics point, but that's true, right? For the violation of hearing of suspension through a district court. Okay. So just make that crystal clear. I, on the same section there, the 10 to 14 points. I'm interested in for debate, do we want to provide a bit more specificity about what the correction plan actually is? Who gets that? What it needs to be in it? How soon they have to present it to us? That seems, unless I'm missing it someplace else, not as clear as it could be. Are there benefits to spelling that out a bit more?
Good, good point. And I don't have an answer.
Voluntarily, the police for that one on the correction plan. Do you want to see it?
Yeah, I think, I mean, of course I want to see it, but I think the council probably should see it. And you guys are the ultimate governing body that you're going to review all these if we have to move further. The correction plan. I think what we can do is put a, a timeframe on it of how fast they have to have this one. I don't know how clear you can get in defining the exact correction plan because every one of them is going to be different. So if they have different problems, they're going to have different plans to correct them. So I don't know if you can define those specifically without adding like a police department policy amount of pages to it. But I think you could put a time constraint on it.
Yeah. So just a within, so in this, in the, so this is a follow-up point that I'll come back to. So within a week of attaining 10 to 14 points, present a correction plan to the chief of police, which then is reviewed by governing body.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
And I, I, I don't know if we can do that. I mean, here's what I'm thinking is the reason that the, the presentation of the correction plan is mainly a warning to them saying, knock it off. And tell us how you're going to fix it. And the one that I think that should be doing that would be the police chief. Because if, or the police department, if they can't continue to do that, then they'll get, continue to get demerits and that'll come to you guys. And so I think that, and plus I don't know when you guys would review it or why you would review it. It would have to be in an open meeting and I don't think, that would be very cumbersome in my opinion. I think that the whole purpose of this is so that if there are demerits, that they have an opportunity to be able to work in private on those demerits. So it doesn't become public and affect their business. And I don't think that that's fair to the business owner. That's my opinion though. And I think if you do do that, then it could affect their licensure, which then you would have to give them appellate procedures, which, and due process rights, which I don't think we want to do because it's just a warning. And so the warning should be given for the demerit saying, okay, you've, you've. Sir, you've served alcohol without giving Pop-Tarts. Gone back to Pop-Tarts. And because of that, then you're going to get five demerit points. Tell me what you're going to be doing, or I guess it would have to be 10. Say you're at 11 points, right? Then police chief would say, okay, you're going to get a warning because you've reached this threshold. I want to hear your correction plan and how you're going to fix it. And then they can present that plan to him and we can put a timeframe in there, 10, 15 days, whatever. And if they continue to work through that plan, great, warning's been served, no worries. If they continue to accumulate demerit points and they've reached the next threshold, then it comes to you guys. But I don't think it's very, I mean, I know you guys want to see everything, do everything and have everything in front of you. But I don't think that's the point of this. I think this is a warning and giving them an opportunity to fix it before it comes to you guys.
Okay. Uh, Mayor?
Yes.
I can, I can follow that logic. Uh, I will say that what comes to mind is if it's a warning, it carries a lot more weight to have that transparency of. The council and the community thus is aware of it in a public meeting of like, hey, there's something going on at this bar. You might want to be, you know, that's in a way, there's a service of information for patrons who might want to make different choices about where to go. If they know that there's a place getting these kinds of violations. Now likely folks know that anyway and making those choices. So I'm not, I'm going to go with you here and it doesn't come to us at this level. But if it's a warning, warnings carry more weight when it comes to this kind of a meeting.
And along those lines, I would ask that that would be a staff update.
Ah, there you go.
You know, that, that, you know, you come in Tuesday, next Tuesday, and you've gotten three. And those come in, the staff updates, I have three.
I, I agree with that. The, the other side of it is I'll tell you, we will have. A case, a police report on every single one of them. So the documentation is going to be there, right? I can give you the staff updates, but if we ever grow to a point where now it does come in front of you, the documentation and, and, and the tracking of how we got to there is all going to be available for you.
Well, so, I mean, in, in the sense of the, the cumulative demerits, a reminder that it is a 24 month time period. So even getting one of these more minor ones that puts them in the, the correction plan slash warning. A second violation of any kind is going to put them into coming before us with a hearing. So I think it, it serves it as a good deterrent to nip it in the bud and. Have best practices moving forward. Councilmember Dan Hong?
This is, this is probably like a, like a living document, isn't it? I mean, if, if there need, I mean, if we need to. If, if we, if we see things down the trail that need to be corrected, we can, we can change things as, as things evolve, as we learn.
It, it is an ordinance, so it would require three readings, but yeah, we can always amend whatever we need to.
Yeah, thank.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Um, related to the point that you just raised and, and thank you, Councilman Han for that clarification too. I wanted to name that we just upped a couple of these demerit, or we suggested, right? That we want to raise a few of these violations to 10 points. So want to say out loud, that means that there's quite a few now. The threshold of coming in for a correction plan or threshold of a correction plan, not coming in, uh, is 10 points. So we're saying you have one example of a sale to a minor, one example of sale to intoxicated person. You're doing a correction plan for that one and we're okay with that. Just want to double check that we don't want to up that threshold. I'm not advocating for it, I'm asking.
And serving in violation. Yes.
Okay, great. Cool. Because otherwise we're like, we had fewer correction plans coming up for one example. So I want to be crystal clear there. Uh, Mayor, another point I want to raise is that. Do we have, so here we have a demerit or a violation includes failure, failure to tip train. But I don't see here, so perhaps someplace else, do we have an affirmative, if you're a license holder, you must tip train? So a requirement to tip train somewhere else in the.
That's in the front of the ordinance, Councilman.
It's not on this section.
This is the definitions and fines. As you get the whole ordinance now, you will see that we've restructured into the front. Where all of the minimum requirements for any type of license is one of the very first things that they read.
Sorry, I missed out.
The full document, and we can bring more to you, is 21 pages. So there was a thought to bring these two important pieces beforehand for full discussion. And then we can bring more certainly before the council for your, your input and your consideration, because this is your document. But because I felt very strongly that these are important, I wanted there to be enough time to get your input on these specific issues.
Thank you. Councilmember Cassidy?
Two, two additional ones there for me. Failure to cooperate with law enforcement, what, what does that look like, feel like, sound like? You know, I mean, I, we can all kind of, we can all paint pictures of that, but, but. We, you know. You know.
So one of the things I think, Councilman, to make it easy for you that we're going to deal with the most right out of the gate is fail to notify law enforcement. When they kick somebody out, when they over serve somebody, when they have a fight, when they do, that's failing to comply with us. And then one of the reasons that we request that they do that. If I'm kicked out of this place, chances are I'm just going to the next place, right? So if they can let us know when someone's kicked out, we can nip it there and move on before we deal with them again at another place and potentially another one. Other scenarios are if there was a fight, we know they have recording in-house and we ask for that. And they run interference with our investigation of trying to resolve the issue. I mean, there's multiple scenarios, but.
And if I may chime in a little bit. From the legal perspective, this is a really vague term and it probably needs to be defined a whole lot better or taken out.
Right. My, my question was, is it the, is it the. Establishment, bartender or barback, is it the consumer of the alcohol who's failing to work with law enforcement? You know. There's some, there's some gaps through there that are a bit unclear to me.
Well, and I think it needs to be defined, I guess my perception is the license holder and or his employee.
Okay.
Failing to comply with law enforcement.
Right. That's, that's very clear to me, right? Because if I'm on the, if I'm on the cusp of, of 10 and I, I get somebody who I just over served out the back door when you're coming in the front. That's a very close, clear picture of that. Is it still vague?
I, I'm, I, I think it's still vague because I don't know what. What does it mean to cooperate with law enforcement? You can, if you want to bring that up.
It, it could read a license holder or employee's failure to notify law enforcement concerning X, Y, Z situations.
That's clear?
That's a lot clearer.
It's more, yeah, that's.
Well, my half is cooperate with.
Cooperates a hard term and I'll, I'll tell you, at least my presumption of the issue with the lawyers is we're playing with the fourth amendment. I can't force somebody to cooperate with me. I just can't. That's, that's against their right. So if we can clearly put that, that bar license and or employees.
So we can legally require them to notify. Is that correct?
Yeah, we can make it a.
I think, and I, I don't think that that would be a problem if we do notify cooperate is just, it's too broad, it's too vague. And I think it would.
It's a dangerous term.
Yeah, I mean. We can't force them, but we can say you've got to notify.
Okay. So my second question, I'm going to shine a spotlight on my own ignorance here, so bear with me. Somebody gets their license suspended, they close that business, they open another business and they apply for another license. Did they get a clean slate? Or do we consider that a new, new legal business entity? Or does that owner have a history with us if they get suspended?
It's a great question. We didn't contemplate that in this title. We could put something in there if that's what you want. But technically, they would be a new legal entity and would be starting from scratch as it's written now.
And it would be. Uh, dangerous for us to, if they were to come and ask for a new license, it would be dangerous for us to bring up that history?
Not necessarily.
We could, we could speak to that.
You can determine, you cannot approve a license, an applicant for, an application for a license. But you'd have to have that foreknowledge.
So we can reference that past, so if they were suspended. Is there any way to write that into this that, you know, these will be kept on record for future use, uh, consideration for reapplications in the future? Is that, is this the right time and place for that or no?
This would be where you'd want to put something like that. If, if you want us to explore some of that language.
Okay, because it would be, it would be really unfortunate if somebody just bounced from legal entity to legal entity and they were consistent in their approach to law enforcement and alcohol.
That'd be a waste of money.
And time.
Could do it if they wanted to. I mean, it, I would be shocked, I would be shocked if they were able to do something like that. Because if they, if their business failed because they got so many demerits, they were suspended for 20 days, for example, right? And so they lost their business for those 20 days. I don't know how they'd have enough capital to start a new business. Unless it was like 10 years down the line, but 10 years down the line, maybe you guys are like, eh, it's a new council at that point. And maybe everyone's like, you know, that's fine, give it a shot again and see if you can follow the rules this time.
I would love to see that added in here because if we create gaps, people are going to flow through them.
Essentially, yeah, I, I can see that. I guess the question in my mind is. Are you talking about full revocation or are you talking about suspension? So if they've had so many suspensions. If they've, maybe we should put something in there and I'm just thinking out loud, if they've had multiple suspensions, that there be a mandatory revocation? Or if they've had a full revocation. That they are ineligible to, I don't know if we can limit that.
That's a different legal entity, right?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if we can limit them to reapplying if they've had a previous. Yeah, I mean, I don't know if we can limit them to reapplying if they've had a previous suspension. I'd have to, I'd have to do some research on that.
That's a hard one right there, but.
Adam, sorry to, to jump in, would it be revocation or we would deny their renewal?
You could deny the renewal, you'd have to articulate why you were doing that, but like we were saying, say in five years.
The cleaner way is that if there are multiple suspensions, then at that annual renewal process, that gives us teeth to say, this individual will not get it renewed for this reason.
Well, you can't do that because you can't, that won't work. You would have to say that there'd be multiple, because they would still have due process rights and they would still have to appeal that to the, um, district court. The renewal, the annual renewal, all that is doing is saying that they've paid their dues, they've paid their taxes and they're ready to get renewed. That's all that is. You can't deny the renewal based on anything else.
Oh, okay. I, I thought that's what we had just said, that.
No, no, and maybe I misspoke on that and I apologize for not being clear. What he was saying is if the businesses failed and they jump in and start a new business, that is when you can deny their new licensure.
Okay.
On a renewal, you cannot.
Got it.
All that is, is an administrative saying, yeah, we paid our taxes and we're good.
Okay.
Does that make sense? So what I was proposing is if they have more than two suspensions in a given year or given timeframe, then that would automatically bump them to suspension or revocation of their license. That way, that would be.
But again, that has to go through district court.
That would, but yeah, you could then say you have two, this is your second one, we're automatically going to, this is going to go forward to district court. The problem that we can't do is say that if you've had a previous suspension or a previous revocation, that you're ineligible for future licensure. I don't believe we can go that far. But you guys, as a board, when they make that application, can at that point then deny it saying, well, you've had the previous suspension. We're a little concerned you're not going to follow the rules and you can vote no. But that's, I mean, this is all conjecture.
No, yeah, and I remember, you know, the, the five criteria on which a application could be denied are really quite specific. And, you know, the, that we don't like it or, you know, we, it, it's really, it's really hard with those five criteria to, to deny a license. They're, they're pretty broad.
Mayor, can I, can we stay on that point? Because I want to emphasize that, because I, what I'm hearing from you, Attorney Phillips, then is, if we had evidence of suspensions and revocations, which we would have from an individual who comes forward with a new business entity sometime later, you believe we could say, we have evidence that you are not, uh, you have not acted in the interest of this community, this, you are not, um, you've caused unsafe actions, like words miss me here, right? But like you were saying, so that can be ground to deny a new application because I've, right in the last month or so, we've had.
I'd have to look into that.
Severe limitation.
And I'd have to look into that. I mean, technically, council can do whatever they want, they just open themselves up to liability, right? And so I would have to look into whether or not those are absolute grounds to be able to say, we're going to deny your liquor license. Because the theory is, they say you can't deny that, say that is not grounds for, for denying it. And they get a liquor license, they're still going to have to follow the same rules. And they could, you still have the same teeth to revoke them, right? And so even though they can jump from entity to entity, they're still having to follow the same rules. And they're still going to be subjected to the same issues.
Yeah, and, and I get that point. The, it'd be nice to be able to not go through that whole thing again, I think is where we're going. But it sounds like that's, yeah, like, oh my gosh, here we are again, Groundhog Day. But it sounds like our.
Well, I think the, the theory is this, that these ordinance changes are going to be a deterrent factor to many license holders, that they're actually going to toe the line. And if they're not, then they know what's going to happen. And that's just the reality of it, is that the, the more clear the rules can be, the bigger deterrent they're going to be to those license holders. And that's, that's the goal.
Yep. Okay. Chief.
I'm just going to be quiet. This makes it more money, I guess, from a lease perspective mindset. Just understand that every time you do this, we're just building evidence. So if it does have to go to the district court, makes it pretty clear cut. These are the rules, this is what was violated, even in the sense of if you as the council chose to not award someone a liquor license, they do have due process, they can appeal. But that's the evidence that we have that you as the council say, we're willing to foot this bill because we know all of these things is why we said no. Even though it's not the five absolute specific.
I do, I'm sorry.
See, I should have been quiet and moved on.
The finding structure, um, can you, what else do we find people for and what does that dollar amount typically look like?
Be more specific in what we find people for, are you talking about like criminal or?
Is there any, no, within the city, is there anything else that we find people for? And what are those dollar amounts relative to these?
Oh, well, there's a fee structure, a fee schedule. And so in municipal court has a bond schedule. And so I don't know how those compare to these. I think these were borrowed.
Right, that's what I'm kind of.
That's what I believe where these came from and, I mean, we can always adjust them.
Because what would be, what would be a win is that if we, we have a violation for whatever reason, and it stings really hard and it never happens again, right? That would be, that would be a win, right? If, um, no violations would be perfect, right? But if, when we do, that there's, there's a demerit and a fine that has a very significant impact on how they run their business, right? So were the, if these dollar amounts were cut and paste across from another town, they, they were probably very thoughtful. But where does that sit relative to anything else that we might find anybody for? And do we want to write, lower those dollar amounts or raise those dollar amounts in order to have the impact that we want to have?
Sure. And, Miss Mayor, I apologize for speaking out of turn, but I think it's a little hard to compare. It's almost apples to oranges. And that's the challenge is that it's, it's hard to compare our fee schedule or bond schedules to this because they're totally different, right? And so the goal in this is to make the fines reasonable enough that someone can actually pay them without having it be detrimental to their business, but having it hurt a little bit. But also being not so high that it's ridiculous, that it's, it's becoming a more of a punishment than it is a deterrent or an improving factor. Does that make sense? And so.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely agree.
I mean, looking over these fines and, and maybe interim chief could speak a little bit more to it. But in looking over these fines, they are fairly comparable to most of the fines that we see on our bond schedule and our fee schedules. But they are hard to compare.
Councilmember Dan Han.
I, I think that, you know, we're painting this, we're, we're painting this, this horrible picture. And we have, we have great business people in town. We're, we're talking about a document to help everybody. And I personally think we're, I think, I think we're overthinking things. I think we have good people, I think they're going to do the right thing. I think this, I think this was, will evolve if we have problems, we can change them. And I, I don't think we should paint the, the, the black picture. I think we should, I think we should trust our, our business people and be positive instead of being negative. Give them a chance, let's see what they can do. All we're trying to do is give them, we're trying to give them some black and white material to work with and something that we understand. And if they fail, they fail. I mean, and I, I think this is great material, but I, I, I don't think we should overthink it. I think we should, I think we need to get something going and trust our, trust our businesses to do the right thing.
Yeah.
Really.
Yeah, I think what you're saying is that's focus on the, the vast majority of the bell curve and not try to worry about how we manage.
Yeah, that, that's, you can, you can beat up the whatevs every, every day. And I, I don't think it's necessary, really, you know. Anyway, thank you.
Other comments or questions?
Mayor, if I may, just for benefit of Councilman Han's statement, it's going to be a very, very small percentage that affects. I can assure you of that. I've spoke with some of the business owners, they already do all the things that we're requiring them to do. It's not really going to affect a lot. This is for us to focus on the small percentage that we just can't get to turn the corner.
Awesome. So we're hoping we can get this cleaned up and, um, on a voting session in the near future. So don't have a date set, but that's the intent.
But perhaps council would want to look at the whole proposed document.
Correct.
On a work session before putting it in ordinance form and there's a lot of other proposed changes.
Yep. Great, all right. See, nothing else, are we good to adjourn? Okay, we'll see you October 14.